Good morning. It is eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting to order for Tuesday, July thirteenth. And the first item is the approval of the agenda, and I would like the board to know that I have requested that the consent agenda item come off for discussion, a brief discussion. Kathy was aware that I was going to be doing that, and so she's here. That grant is significant, and I just felt it deserves some, a little bit of attention and discussion. So with that, and so my plan would be to have that discussion right before our eight-thirty-five item.
Move to approve the agenda with a change.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carries. Okay. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda? Anything online, Steve?
Mr. Chair, I did receive an online request to speak before this board, and I've had, been reaching out to that individual over the last ten days or so, and haven't been able to get a hold of them to have them understand the process of getting on the, or to get before you, and so I'll continue to, to reach that, but did want to make note that we do have a pending, pending, pending request.
Thank you. All right, and we'll move on to the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. We have before you the minutes from June twenty-second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Mojo, and second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. All right, we will take our consent agenda item. Kathy. Good morning, and thank you for coming and just kind of giving us a brief update on this. I thought it was a significant grant that should have a little discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is a Department of Human Services grant. It actually is a continuation of previous funding that we've received for working on youth, addressing youth alcohol, tobacco, and other substances, so prevention grant. It goes for five years, or we are awarded it for five years from July of twenty-one this month, and it goes through June of two thousand twenty-six. So the five-year grant total is nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight, so it's, it's less than two hundred thousand a year, and it would pay for the person that is going to manage this initiative, as well as additional costs and expenses that are in the budget. The Department of Human Services is requiring us to advertise for a full-time person. We have a full-time person currently that has provided alcohol, tobacco, and other substance use prevention initiatives, has worked with us for six years. So we will advertise externally as required. Obviously, our person that has been with Clay County Public Health for six years has the experience and background, so, you know, if there's someone that's qualified that's external, we'll have to determine that. The Department of Human Services is requesting to be part of that interview process as well. So we will follow their requirements and advertise and go through the competitive process.
One of the, one of the, another one of the reasons that, that I wanted to have this discussion for our new commissioners, when we have these grant positions, we usually kind of like to have it noted that they are, these positions are created based on a grant, and they're probably, as of now, the length of those positions follow the grant.
Correct.
Right? That's, and that's the end.
That is correct.
Your intention, too, and within.
Right. And, Mr. Chair, we, the person that we have internally, the grant funding sources are, will be done at the end of this month, so that person would no longer have any funding sources, and then would no longer be able to remain on our staff.
Okay. Commissioner Mojo, did you have?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy, in terms of the scope of education and programming that this individual would do under this grant, we've talked about a new detox facility. I know you're applying for a large grant. Is, is that scope of what this position would do, could that be used to bolster the focus on programming that we were, could offer at a new detox center?
No, this grant, Commissioner Mojo, is for youth.
Okay.
So its focus will be with one particular school district in Clay County. They, they have determined that based on the youth student survey. So this individual will be actually working with that one particular school to begin with. They may expand that after that, but it's totally with youth.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments of Kathy? So the request would be to approve the, the grant and the, and the five-year position?
Correct.
All right, okay. It's the board's wishes.
I move that we accept the grant.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Kathy, I just felt it was almost a million dollars is worth talking about a little bit.
Sure. Yep, no problem. Thank you.
And we just can't go another week without seeing you.
Yeah.
I knew, I knew that was the underlying one, Commissioner Mojo.
Yeah. You really thought you were done coming on Tuesday.
Yeah.
All right. Next, we have our request of approval from the Sheriff's Office for the two thousand twenty-two vehicle purchases. Sheriff Empting, good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having us this morning. I thought ordering our two thousand twenty-two cars now would be early, but when I look back at our two thousand twenty-one car order, it was the same time, so we were kind of right on track. And we didn't get our cars, when we ordered the two thousand twenty-ones, we didn't get them until well into two thousand twenty-one. Actually, we're still waiting for a car to come in yet, so this is kind of right on track. And with the, the chip shortage that's going on right now, it's just, it's more difficult to get cars and things like that. So our request is, is to be able to get eight cars for two thousand twenty-two, one being a Durango for our warrants and transports, Lieutenant Chrysler Pacifica for warrants and transports, and then there would be Tahos for the patrol division. Trying to get away from our Fords, they're, they're really getting to be more like a passenger car nowadays, and they're getting to be lower to the ground. I looked at the one this morning that was in the garage compared to Josh's Charger, and there's more clearance on a Charger than there is right now on the Fords. There's not much clearance on those Fords anymore by the time you hit first plastic. There's more clearance on the Tahos. Just in talking to our mechanics, they prefer to work on the Tahoe or the Ford because they're more straightforward, the parts are less expensive, more standard equipment in the Tahos than the Fords. Right now, we don't have rear heat and air in our Fords, and it makes it somewhat difficult to get, you know, somebody cooled down, or in the summertime when you have that cage and that partition in the car. And so getting some rear heat and air back there for folks is, is a lot better for them as well. We do have a two thousand twenty Ford that I would consider to be a mechanic's dream and an owner's nightmare, because it just seems like once they hit the thirty-six thousand, thirty-eight thousand mark, we're starting to sink money into them. And we just recently had to do that with our, our two thousand twenty that we have. So we do have a Tahoe on the road right now for our K nine. It's, it's been a very good car for us. He seems to like it, rear heat and air standard and things like that. Our, our request would be is to order the Tahos over the Fords.
How do Sheriff, how do the, economically, how do the Tahos compare with other vehicles in terms of mileage and all that kind of thing? I, I certainly get the clearance thing. That's important in our winter months.
Yep. I think that's, that's when I was going to defer to you. I think you probably know a little bit more about that. I think they're, they're running about the same. The, the Fords are a V-six, so they do have to work a little bit harder compared to the V-eight engine as well. Would you know that?
I think there's about four or five miles per hour, or four or five miles per gallon difference if you're looking for a fuel economy.
Okay.
Depending on city and county driving, but.
So it's a little?
It's a little less with the Tahos, the miles per gallons.
Yeah, okay.
We, we are also looking at these, too, that they would be better for resale at, at auction as well.
Am I, another question is the, is the listed vehicle cost that you have there, that, for a new Tahoe, that seems to be low.
It is. It's a state bid price. So we, yep, that's a state bid price. And as you can see, there's two different prices listed there. The one that's for forty thousand, seven eighty-four, that's for a spotlight, so that'd be for our patrol division. And the other two, one is, one would be assigned to Lieutenant Schroeder, and one would be assigned to myself. And that's the forty thousand fifty-nine, because we're not going to do spotlights.
And, and then you have to equip those, too, then? That's a separate?
We would, yeah. We would still have to equip those. Again, like last year, we use as much as we possibly can. We reuse as much emergency equipment as we can. There are some Senate councils that we're going to have to switch over and things like that, but we would have to do that anyway, going from the two thousand nineteen's to the, the two thousand twenty-two's, whether it be a Ford or whether it be a Tahoe. So we'd have to do that no matter what.
Okay. Commissioner Ebinger.
And just looking at your proceeds from the auction, I have not had a chance to review, but has the legislation changed on asset forfeiture? Has that impacted on that at all?
No, it won't. What it, what these, what these proceeds are, are these are the cars that we sell, the squad cars that we sell. So that doesn't have anything to do with, with this. And actually, there's going to be ten thousand more in there, because Rory with IT is buying one of the vans that we have yet to sell at auction, just because they got, got done late. And we're, we still have two more cars to sell at auction as well.
Okay. The DWI forfeiture vehicles, has that been changed at all, do you know?
Not yet. Nope, not, not at, not at this time, anyway. We're going to have a legislative review with, with the MSA legal rep next week, so I'll know more.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions? Mr. Mojo.
Thank you. I noticed the Dodge during going, the Chrysler Pacifica. Just in terms of space, it seems like the Pacifica would be more spacious for transports, and it's cheaper. So can you tell me why we're getting the Durango?
The Durango is for, that's going to be assigned to Dave Johnson, who is the lieutenant of that division. He not only does transports, but he also does civil papers, and he does all different kinds of things. So for him, we would, we would go with the Durango over the van. The, the vans that we get are more for those that are putting on a lot of miles and transporting every day. And as, I don't know if you compared the prices from last year to this year, but those, those numbers are up, too. The Pacifica had the largest jump from last year with thirty-five hundred dollar increase, and the Durango had a three thousand dollar increase from last year.
Well, and certainly I, I share the same comments of Commissioner Campbell. I know we've, we're changing from the interceptors and going up to a, a larger Tahoe, and just know that, I would hope that our gas budget is reflected, because, you know, those, those cost a lot more money to drive than, than those V-sixes.
Yep. And that is going to be reflected in our, our budget for, for two thousand twenty-two. We did add, add, I think, fifteen thousand in there.
Josh, anything you want to add to this?
You know, as far as the gas budget goes, I know, obviously, yeah, there's a little less on the miles per gallon with the Tahos, but we have a different range, and some of the deputies put on a lot of miles and some don't. And as they put on years of service, it seems like it tends to, the miles that they put on go down. You know, when I first started, I was putting on a hundred and thirty thousand in three years, so it's not that much now. So it just kind of drops down a little bit. So I, I think it kind of ebbs and flows a little bit with the gas budget.
Do you believe that the, as Sheriff Empting said, the, the, at the end of our, your life period on these vehicles, the trade-in value would be higher on the Tahos?
Yeah.
And could that offset that fifteen thousand there? That's per year, though, on the, on the?
Yeah, we'll, we'll end up inevitably getting more for the Tahos, just because they're just more of a sought-after vehicle, so.
All right. Any other comments? And it looks like the Internal Service Fund is adequate to?
Yes, yep. Our Internal Service Funds, as you can see, there's a total with the auction proceeds is three eighty-five, and again, that will increase due to having to sell two more cars at our auction. And we will have adequate funds left over as well for the equipment and things like that.
What is the fit-up cost per vehicle?
They're expensive. Roughly, right now, per vehicle, if we're doing just brand-new, just equipment alone, the emergency equipment, stuff like that, is roughly fifteen thousand.
Per car?
And that doesn't include an MVR, that doesn't include the laptops and things like that. That's just your emergency equipment, your cages and stuff like that, and that's per car.
So we're, I mean, I, I know we've got a little bit of a cushion here with the vehicle costs versus what the funds available are, so where are the fit-up costs coming from?
That would come from that, those proceeds. So it would come from the auction proceeds, and then what's left over after, after we purchase the vehicle.
So that, if I'm doing the math, if it's fifteen, fit-up costs, it seems like we're going to be over budget.
It, it won't be fifteen for each car. We can, some of them, the lights, all the kits, the lights will transfer. Just need a kit, basically, to get it to transfer to a Tahoe, so those are, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks to get a kit to make it communicate with, with our equipment, basically. So some, most of them won't be a brand-new outfit.
But the, the follow-up to, if I can, Commissioner Mojo, the, the follow-up, the eight vehicles that you're selling, those will, all, those funds will also go back in.
Right. Yep, they will. And then?
Every time you've presented to us in terms of the buying of vehicles, whether it was you or Sheriff Burke was before you, we've always approved the vehicle cost itself.
Yep.
Just showing the same way you're doing it now.
Yeah, exactly. That's the same way we're doing it now. And like I said, these aren't all new, so it won't be fifteen thousand per. So we'll use as much as we can.
And one of the, one of the biggest issues is when, especially when you switch the type of vehicle from a Ford to a Chevy or Dodge or whatever, sometimes then your, your ability to transfer equipment from one vehicle to others diminished.
That's correct. And that happens even if Ford were to change body styles like they did. Two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, they changed body style, so then we had to do, you know, different center councils, different push bumpers and things like that. And we would have to do that if we went to a Ford or if we went to a Chevy with these. But as Josh indicated, there's transfer kits that we can use for cages or transfer kits that we can use for lights and things like that, and we definitely use transfer kits as much as we can rather than buying new. So we reuse as much as we possibly can.
And one final question from me. Going, going through this state bid and who you're dealing with and who you've got these quotes from, what have they told you about availability and delivery?
Yep. There, everything's kind of pushed back right now. There's that chip shortage, and that's what's causing the problem with, with a lot of this. So that's why I'm looking to do this now, so we can try and get this done as soon as we possibly can. But the deliveries and the builds on them are extended out. If we order these now, they're going to, I'm hoping we can get them by February, you know, February, March, and get them on the road. So we won't take delivery of these until after January one of two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Well, if we have to do it, I suggest we get our order in.
Yep, yep.
All right. What's the board's wishes?
I move we approve this purchase, or these purchases.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. All right, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
And Josh?
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have, we're going to get the first of our department informa, the annual budget information, and we have Information Services and Mark Sloan. Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. It's my honor and privilege to kick off two thousand twenty-two's budget season.
Sure. Sure, sure.
That's dripping sarcasm.
It's like a Band-Aid. I just want to get it over with, right?
Oh, got it.
All right, so.
Fire your courage.
We, we work diligently as department heads to be good stewards of the public funds we're entrusted with. So throughout the years, we keep track of how we spend money and look at where we're going to spend money, and try to plan as best we can to get the best investment we can with the dollars we have available to us. And as we do that, we put together our budgets for the next calendar year. And before you, you should have the one that says Information Services at the top. And we, as we went through this, we looked at what we need to do and what we're planning to do, and what our goals, objectives are going to be for two thousand twenty-two, and how we can best achieve those. And what we found is most of the budget items we have are pretty consistent to what our spending costs are going to be. So we, most of them stayed the same. The biggest change for us that we're asking for is an increase in our part-time help. We have two variable-hour positions, our GIS technician and our multimedia technician. We'd like to use those people a little bit more to do some of the things we're trying to do. They're a really cost-effective way of getting work done. They're, they're cheap labor is what they are for us. But the GIS technician, what we're using that person for, we're building out a, on our GIS side, our GIS software has the capability of doing a lot more than just mapping the things we map. And we're going to, we're mapping more and more of our facilities systems. And we're using that technician now to build that facilities management system, it's called. And we're going to use that person to do some more of that. I hope, that will hopefully help make a lot of our people more efficient. The other person is, we have a multimedia technician, the guy, Tim DeForge, that's recording our meeting right now, was that person for many, many years, and then we promoted him into web specialist where he works full-time. But he's asked if we could possibly hire a part-timer to help him out, especially for some of the night meetings and things he's been doing. So that's why we're seeing an increase in that line item for salaries part-time. The other increase we've got next year really is other professional services, and the reason for that specifically is we've grown, and one of the things we pay for out of that budget is the cost of our security camera systems, and we just have more cameras. So it's going to cost us more for licensing of those, as we have more buildings and more venues that we take care of. So that's just.
Mark, if I can stop you saying?
Yep.
Maybe a question for Steve. When it comes to all of our licensing, whether it's on your side or Rory's side or what have you, do all of those expenses fall under other professional services, or some of them in a different category or description?
I understand. I mean, we have multiple, multiple categories where they would fall. But in this case, it's, it's in this one. But we, in Rory's, I think they'll be in a different area.
Right. Yeah, that's, I, I guess it's, or when I look at it, it's kind of hard to understand how when one area licensing falls under other professional services, but then in another one, it'd be a different line item, so.
Yeah, and that's true. And I have other licenses that falls under software.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, I kind of make the choice, I think, as department heads, kind of decide what best fit is that, depending on what, for me, it's which vendor I'm using. We use, some vendors we buy software from, so we put it there, but in this case, it's a vendor we use that does a lot of installation and maintenance and those types of things for us, and they're the same people we pay the fees to. So I just keep all their stuff in one budget item. That's kind of how I approach that.
Okay.
Besides that, we're, we're in good shape. We'll be able to provide great services from our GIS folks and our communications folks next year. We're looking forward to serving the citizens.
In terms of the, where we have on these, and this maybe not directed just to you, Mark, but again to Steve, because you're, you're the first one here before us, but the health insurance, I see, according to your line item here, it's actually a decrease of one point three percent. Am I going across that correctly? And I'm wondering how, how we arrive at a negative amount for health insurance?
I guess I don't know. We, in our spreadsheet that we get from Lori, it just has a, it's calculated by number of employees, so.
What we do see, Mr. Chair, and it's different with, with the changes that we made to our insurance plans for, for new employees last year, you don't have a, you don't have a same.
Okay, so it might, it might be based on whether it's single or family, within that department. Okay, that would make sense.
And whether they were grandfathered in.
Right. Okay.
That's, that's it.
Well, then I'm glad to see that that's working.
Good, good. One last thing I'd like to mention is, it's not on our budget here, but one of the programs that we manage is our county surveyor budget or our section corner remonetization program. That program, as we've been deploying it the last several years, has been working exceptionally well. We're getting a really quality product, and couldn't be happier with how it's working for us. So I highly encourage you to continue that. I think it's really a win-win for our citizens and for our staff, especially because we're getting good quality data. And we just wrapped up Tansom Township this last season, and that was probably one of our most expensive places to work, because it was mostly swamps. And some of those corners hadn't been visited for a hundred fifty years, but we've got them recorded now, so that's a good program.
Excellent, excellent. You should sometime bring us a map and show us what's complete and what's, what's left and?
Yes, okay. Be, be happy to.
Very good. I know you're good at maps.
Yeah, we do, we do those.
All right. Any, any other questions of Mark? Of course, thank you. This is just getting a initial look at all of these things, and we'll, by September, we'll probably let you know regarding your, your main increase that you're requesting in the part-time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Next, we have our annual budget presentation from Inform, oh, from Technology Services and our new director, Rory. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thanks for having me this morning. One of the things that Technology Services does is really an extension of every other department in the county. We're kind of behind the scenes. We, we make sure that our public-facing departments serve the customers of the public as well as, as well as they can. With that said, we'll just kind of jump in right away. One thing that you just finished up with Mark and Steve on was the, you know, the salaries, that as you see in ours, it's also decreased to the tune maybe around forty thousand dollars, just with Tim Dent retiring. That was a, that was a large chunk, and now new staff that's been onboarded, they start out at that lower county contribution rate, depending if they do a single or family plan. One thing we are looking to increase a little bit this year, as we've already, as you can see, we can, we've already hit our, our salaries overtime line, even in May. We're looking to increase that just slightly for two thousand twenty-two. One of the other jumps we have is the other professional services fund, and as was, was described with Mark, it's, those are, you know, kind of hired help, these companies that help us out with setting up new systems, you know, software, security as a service is really a big, a big focal point this year. It's something we've been working with the state of Minnesota on, and we'll continue that in two thousand twenty-two, expand those, expand those funds and those services. The next jump we have is training budget. Up to this year, Microsoft, with our agreement with them, has provided us with around ten thousand dollars a year in free training services as part of our enterprise agreement. And two thousand twenty-one is the last year they'll be providing that. So just an increase in that as we have new staff and the additional training needs for our staff. And the next item I'd like to cover is the six, six-six-zero-four equipment over five hundred. We put an increase of fifteen thousand dollars in there, and what that was for is potentially a purchase of a new vehicle in, next year, for just for a technology services department. We can keep it over here to eliminate some of the time spent on the reservation process with the, with family. with the, with family.
Is that the one that we were just talking about with the sheriff's department?
Yep. And next week, I'll be submitting an agenda item for approval for, you know, looking at one of the vehicles that Sheriff Emting mentioned.
Okay.
Transport vehicles for around $10,000, so. And the, the last item that I have at least to mention here is our, our internal services, increase of $25,000 there on replacing servers. Really have, the biggest need is replacing endpoints, computers, laptops, things of that nature, which seem to not be able to catch up every year. You know, if we had a desktop machine, that's, you know, five-year replacement schedule. And now with these new laptops, we've been getting, you know, maybe a three- to four-year replacement cycle. So we're, we're starting to ramp that up a little bit, so we have, have those funds replaced for the next few years here.
We're in 2020 and probably a little bit, maybe this year, the, through CARES, we, we bought a significant amount of new laptops.
Yeah.
For all the work that was done off-campus. How are we incorporating future replacements of those with our internal service fund?
That, that would be where this, a lot of this jump would come in.
Okay, is that, is that part of that then to?
Yep, start ramping that up a little bit. So the, the main difference between a desktop and a laptop is about a $400 difference. So as we, as we get over the three- to four-year cycle, we're, we're going to be shy $80,000 when it comes to that time to replace those laptops.
Because maybe Commissioner Mojo or Steve can help me out, but it seems to me that we, we had a significant investment into that, that equipment and, yeah, I thought it was, yeah, I thought, I thought it was five, half a million dollars and.
That's true, Mr. Chair. We, I mean, we do have funds that are already set aside for that. And so I, I think what Rory's looking at here with the $25,000 is we're looking for an $80,000 essentially increase over that, or $100,000 increase maybe over the next few years to, to address that. So, correct? I mean, it's not just because we've purchased, we have some ongoing, ongoing needs that we have each year, but Rory's anticipating that, that, that growth now, so we're in three years.
I understand some of those laptops replace desktops. And the desktops were the ones that were in the internal service fund originally.
Correct.
And so, so now it's just a matter of making that adjustment. And if you're comfortable that $25,000 is enough based on a half-a-million-dollar purchases.
Oh, at least, at least for this year, we'll be.
Well, that's good, that's.
Yep. Existing laptops, we had around 150, 175 along with those desktops that would fall under the this year's category, this year's cycle. We did purchase 250 new laptops.
Right.
2020.
That's what I'm getting at.
So those are the ones that'll be upcoming. So next year, you might see maybe more of a request for increase on those. But as it sits this year, we won't need to replace those quite yet. So these will just replace our existing desktops and laptops.
Commissioner Gross.
I got a question on the vehicle purchases. You put $5,000 in there for trying, going to get one of the sheriff's vehicles. But the sheriff's vehicles aren't going to be available till 2022, so.
Right. From what Sheriff Emting indicated, they'll be going to auction this fall. So I put the request in originally as $15,000 for 2020, 2022 fiscal year. But as we did a little more research, we found a van that the sheriff's office would be selling this fall that I'll be bringing to the board next week for.
Thank you.
For consideration.
So that number might.
Go down.
Go down a little.
Yep. And we may be able to use internal services funds, speaking after speaking with Lori Johnson on that.
Commissioner.
Yes, being new to this, just a question just occurs to me. We have a lot of recovery of funds when we trade in vehicles. And I know we don't wait to replace computers until they're, they're broken. Is there any kind of recovery or trade-in value or anything we get on our old computer equipment when we get new?
Those, we, we stretch them out as long as we can. Typically, once the warranty runs out, even then, then we'll get even another year out of them. By that point, they're, we send them to Computer Electronics Recycling with the solid waste department. We have our maintenance staff come and retrieve those and bring those to those locations.
So no, no recovery on that?
There's not. There, there used to be years ago at the county auction, but the amount we'd get was so minimal that it wasn't, wasn't worth the hassle.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Rory?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Mojo.
I just want to point out that I think your department and Tim Dent's department really experienced probably the, the largest swing of services and what you're providing and really hit the ground running in terms of making sure county business could continue during our, the pandemic. So I thank you for that. But also appreciate the fact that we were able to use federal CARES dollars to reduce the strain on the levy because there were equipment needs that we needed to address. And because of the pandemic, we're able to do so. I, my, will echo the comments in terms of internal service, make sure we're tracking that accurately. And I appreciate that it will only add the, the 25 or so to what the new request is. We just want to make sure and, and track that as accurately as possible. But overall, this looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rory.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the annual budget presentation from our county attorney, Mr. Melton. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I guess I'll, bottom line upfront, I think it's a pretty straight budget this year. I didn't ask for anything new or any new proposed funding. So looking through it, starting with the law library, as is typical over probably the last seven years, the law library fees that come through the court, revenues equal to expenditures, and that's stayed pretty straightforward. Under revenues, under the county attorney's office, there's still the, as you'll see under the 5,400 line, that's the, there's no more city prosecution listed. We are done with doing any city prosecutions. So Holly had been the last city we were doing, and we're no longer doing that. Otherwise, there's miscellaneous funds that come through the state, working with social services for child support cases and child needed protection services cases, CHIPS cases. And so we get refunds in regard to that. And then the restorative justice grant that we have, that basically equals all the revenues that we have. In regard to salaries, slight increase over 2021. I think as you were talking with Mark Sloan and so others, our, our insurance actually increased slightly. And then moving on to the rest of the para social security, everything else just increased per the formula along with salaries. Our printing and publishing continues. If you look, we were regularly well below budget on that, so I've been trying to increase that slightly. So that increased by $3,000 from $15,000 up to $18,000. But if you look down to process services under line 6271, that actually decreased from 18 down to 15. So it's offset exactly the same. We're just not seeing as much process served when we're going to trial as much as we have in the past. Otherwise, I think, as you know from when we were doing the budget update, our 2020 budget on several areas of trial prosecution, some of those transcript costs, those kind of things, were definitely down just because we didn't have as many trials over 2020 due to the pandemic. We expect all those to go back up to the cost that they have had in the past. So anyway, other, other than that, those all stayed pretty consistent. I think you saw our travel expense was very low 2020 and actually through 2021 mostly. But again, I expect those will increase back up now, so. If there's no other questions then in regard to expenditures, that's pretty straightforward. Drug court is of course included in there. And then under the restorative justice side of things, that pays for a portion of victim services employees as, under that grant part. So that's that expenditure piece. Then moving to victim witness side, the state grant that pays the other portion of their salary, and they also have a portion of fines that come from the court. Their expenditures salary-wise increased slightly, as well as then health insurance, I guess, dropped slightly, but it's pretty straightforward. And the rest is under a voca grant for the remainder of the salary for the rest of the employees. And that would total the expenditures for the victim services. So again, no real increases this year. I think probably to tell the board, you know, we're, we're at a point, we did not, we lost a legal secretary three years ago. We didn't ask to put that back on at the time of the budget. We've gone for about three years without them. I don't think we quite need a new one this year, but we're getting close. I expect probably that'll be the increase that we'll see next year in asking for, to build or get that person back up. So we have six legal assistants along with 12 attorneys, which is about the right offset. So they've been, several, a couple of them are taking more than two attorneys at a time, so. But we didn't ask for it this year, but I expect it'll probably be something we'll be looking at next year.
Mr. Mojo.
Thank you. Brian, I, we've, I've had, not had, but overheard conversations in terms of adding an additional court focus area. How close are we to having substantial conversations about what that would mean to budgets?
Are you talking the mental health court? Are you talking?
Yes.
I think, you know, looking at a specialty court such as mental health court would fit alongside, along with our drug court and veterans court where although it's a specialized area, it, it wouldn't necessarily increase to the point where we require another attorney. It would just focus things a little bit different in the way we would do business.
Okay.
And, and work to help those people have mental health issues. But I don't think it would really cause an increase for either legal assistant or attorneys at this point.
Okay. And I, I think this board has seen the value of those specialty courts. And, and certainly to hear that it's not something where we need to start planning to add additional line items down the road for it, I would certainly encourage you to do whatever we can to make it happen.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it'll be a great thing, and we continue to meet and plan with the judges. I think the summer, we've had a little dip. We had a few meetings. We haven't had one lately. I think we're having one scheduled for, for September to continue to look to that. I think the, the bigger potential or, or chance for change is when we add an additional judge.
Right.
I think we're probably one to two years out where we'll go from four judges to a fifth judge somewhere within that time period. And at that point, then we'll definitely continue to see that increase. And we need it. We, we need that additional judge, and we're right about right set. But as soon as we get that judge, I, I think we'll just see more movement and probably potentially need an additional attorney to help begin covering some of those things too.
Thank you.
A follow-up to Commissioner Mojo's questions. I know that Kathy McKay and Rhonda Porter, and I know you have had involvement with a, a grant application that we're submitting that's due in August, I believe.
August 8th, I think it's due. I, yeah, we've been meeting on that and.
So my, my question is, if, if we get that, which will be a fantastic thing for Clay County, but if we get that, and once that's operational, what do you see from, is that going to create extra demands in, in your department?
I don't think it would create, would cause demands. I think really it's a need that we're seeing coming out of the courts where we're getting what we call Rule 20s, where individuals who have been charged aren't competent to move forward to trial. So we need to find placements for them or just our commitment work that we do. We have people that, you know, have serious issues of mental health or chemical dependency. So we're already, we're already working them through the court. We're just typically, or what we need to do right now is we're already shipping them off to other places such as community-based health hospitals in Fergus Falls or Alexandria or Wilmer. Whereas if we have placement that's here, we have less of a travel budget, we have less coordination that has to go on to get those people moved and.
Your daily cost of housing.
Daily, right. So I mean, right, and the daily cost that.
Greatly reduced, right?
Absolutely. So, so those are needs that we need to, we have that need now. It'll just help support us when we, once we get that, if we get that grant and start getting that built.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Our next is our annual update from West Central Initiative. Rebecca Peterson and Jill Ammison.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for having us, Commissioners and staff.
Make sure you, make sure you get to a microphone and that the little light shows green when you talk.
Mine is green, is yours green?
Mine's green.
So I think you might remember that last year when we presented, we started with a video to introduce you to several of our staff. And today, we brought in-person staff and members of our EDD board, including Commissioner Callie here. Thank you. I saw you on Zoom yesterday. So maybe, Jenna, you'd like to introduce yourself?
Gawin apji ninita ojibwe masi, dash ninga gagwajitun giojibwe mwen, Jenna Rae, nindijna koz, wii ninga kinemazi, nindo dem, opini kani zini, nindunjiba. Hi, I don't speak ojibwe very well, but I try anyway. My name is Jenna Rae. I don't know my clan, and I come from Morris. I also belong to the White Earth, or the, the Turtle Mountain Nation and the Little Shell Nation of Montana. I'm a development associate who joined the team a few months ago. Thank you for having us. It's nice to be here.
And Deb, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. Deb White, I'm, 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 I'm the city council, and I'm the vice chair of the.
And Samantha.
I'm Samantha Van Wachill Meyer, and I've been with WCI for a couple of years. It always remains about that.
And Rebecca Peterson, Director of Development. Before I turn it over to Jill, I have a quick question. We're either in a different room or you remodeled?
You're, you are in a different room probably than the last time.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and this one was remodeled too.
Yeah. So I'm right on all counts.
Yeah, so some of both.
Okay. So I think I'll turn it over to Jill for starters.
Good morning. I'm Jill Ammison. I'm the Innovation Strategist at West Central Initiative, which is just a fancy title for saying a planner, working in economic development. Normally, at this part of the presentation, I give you all the information and all the data that has happened over the last year. As you know, we're still waiting on the census information to give you that finalized data. So what's in your packet, I apologize, is a year old. It says 2019. We're still waiting again for that 2020 information, which we will send to the Administrator Larson to make sure that gets out to you as soon as it's available. The other big thing we've been a part of is our Economic Development Strategies document. It was just approved yesterday by our EDD board and Board of Directors. So thank you, Commissioner and Councilwoman. It's our, our five-year plan. So what we've developed is kind of the generic information of what general areas should we be focusing on. As you well know, housing, childcare issues, workforce issues, all of those things came up. Our planners will now take that five-year plan and condense it down to a one-year plan of action, and we'll be sending that out to you as well so you can inform us on where we need to be spending our priority. The public is most interested, as we found out through survey, in infrastructure improvements, including broadband. One of the things we'll be doing immediately is working with the Blandon Foundation on a broadband development series. That information will be on, in a meeting in September, so we'll get that information out to you. We really want to see, not only does broadband come to all of our communities, but that our businesses and institutions are able to utilize it to its fullest so that providers that are investing in the broadband see returns on that investment and can continue that moving forward. The other item I wanted to make sure to mention is in 2020, we hired two additional planners. One is located in Moorhead, Alexander Johnson. He's been focusing on housing plans. We've been working with the Clay County HRA. I believe we signed on to the small cities application for the city of Dilworth. And he's working to make sure that the information that is necessary for grant applications, that you have that readily available to you. And with that, I'll pass to Rebecca.
Sure, thank you, Jill. And we really want this to be as much a conversation between ourselves and you as anything. But first of all, as the Director of Development, I have to thank you for your past support. I think you received a letter in your packet asking for future support. West Central Initiative is kind of an anomaly. We serve not only as the Minnesota Initiative Fund in the region, but we also serve as the regional development organization. Therefore, our EDD Advisory Board meeting that meets quarterly also reports to the WCI board. And so in sort of reviewing our relationship in the community with other RD And so in sort of reviewing our relationship in the community with other RDOs, that's why we're looking for a possible increase in funding from our municipalities going forward. And we suggested 20% based on just what we're asking everyone. So it's something for you to kick around, ask us questions about going forward. But I just wanted to, I think last year we talked a lot about return on investment and the investment that you make in WCI. And it's been an unusual year, obviously. But in Clay County, this past year, we were able to do $91,000 in loans and $730,000 in grants, mostly emergency childcare grants, small business grants, and then grants out of our resiliency fund. And I think you remember last year when we visited you, well, it was a year ago, so you might not remember. But we started something called the Resiliency Fund so that we could react quickly to the needs of our region. In June, we distributed about $300,000 in grants. Then in July, another $300,000. And then we went into a participatory grant-making round in the fall. We knew that there would be things that sort of fell through the cracks, so we saved some of those dollars. And it was over a million dollars that we were able to redistribute throughout the region. But $730,000 of those dollars came to Clay County. So we could certainly give you a rundown of exactly where those went. A lot of it was for emergency, housing relief, childcare relief, some other things. In addition to some of the things Jill mentioned, we've also been doing a lot of work in your community down the road of Barnesville. Samantha helps with the funds there. The Barnesville Area Community Fund, you all know Karen Lauer. I'm sure she's a very dynamic, active woman and they're a very active community. So we've been doing a lot of work with them, along with, as Jill said, the community of Dilworth on a housing study. So with that, are there any questions for us? Like I said, here I said I wanted a conversation. I'm doing all the talking.
So I, we're going through a comprehensive plan right now for Clay County. And I know, I know that West Central has a lot of good information that can, is provided. We just had a meeting yesterday and, and the topic of, based on community input, some of the areas were, how can we better inform our communities of the resources available?
Sure.
And that's, that's no negative towards anybody, but anytime that we get community feedback that says, how can we improve on, on communication and, and understanding and knowing what's available? This last year, year and a half, our business community suffered greatly, as you know, and there was a lot of stress put on them. And I'm glad to hear that there was significant amount of grants available that, that were used. One of the, some of the comments that we received, though, were that apparently not, not everybody is aware of what's available. And so my question would be, how can we assist in, in making, giving more awareness to people of what's available? And I'm talking about whether, whether it's, whether it's daycares or whether it's small business, we have a, we have a small business loan fund and, and that is never used to the extent it should be, as far as I'm concerned, anyway. If you have, if we have the dollars available, why, why, why isn't it being used? And I throw those things out there, just Commissioner Mojo and I are serving on the Comprehensive Plan Update Committee and we're hearing those things coming up. So, so I think it would, any advice you can give us or any way that we can help in terms of offering resources or, or the ability to share what these resources are, I think is important.
I think we understand that even internally, that whole communications pipeline, sometimes we're out there talking to folks and, and we'd say that we work for West Central Initiative and they ask us, well, what's that? Right? And so we actually have hired, are in the process of hiring another communications staff because communications is critical. I think one of the things we learned when we were at Stevens County, you mentioned the childcare issue and getting those childcare dollars because we had some forgivable childcare loans and they weren't all used, you know, surprisingly. And so it's finding that information pipeline, that communication. So Stevens County is now assigning, I think, to First Children's Finance or they have someone on staff that's going to be that communications person that will get this information to everyone in the childcare system.
And I do want to add to Rebecca's point. When we did our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies, we had 11 focus groups and in every one of those focus groups, information came up as, how do we get, how do we reach people with all the different channels of media? Nothing seems to be effective anymore. So thank you so much for your offer of partnership and I hope we can figure that out together, share as much as we can for businesses.
Well, I know Commissioner Gross in the past has raised this question, too. We have, we have several different channels for economic development. We have, Morehead has an economic development group, Barnesville has an economic group, Holly probably has their version of it, and so does each community. We have the Greater Fargo-Moore Economic Development Group. And how, how are we all communicating together to provide the best opportunity of resources so that our business communities can grow, our, even our residential communities can grow? We have all these things and it's, it seems to me that, that we're not quite there yet when it comes to communicating.
And I appreciate you bringing that up because Commissioner Gross, I remember you bringing this up two or three years ago.
Right.
And we went back and Greg Wagner said, well, I better get on that. And they, and something started happening. People started getting together. So I think we have to ask that question of ourselves time and again and bring that back to the, I think also, this has been an exceptional year, that a lot of communications, when we were receiving funding that we had to disseminate quickly, I mean, it was like a fire hose and, and trying to get the information out there quickly and get the dollars out there quickly. So to your point, Commissioner Campbell, we need a mechanism in place that's always ready and able to kick into high gear.
We have been able to, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, man.
We have been able to create a newsletter for our economic development professionals, to your point that everyone has some staff in place. Thankfully, we have been meeting on a regular basis. We have that email newsletter that can share those resources. But I'd love for that to be more of a two-way conversation rather than just, as Rebecca said, a data hose pointed at folks. So we relied heavily on those partnerships as we metabolized dollars from the state and got those into the community. And kudos to the staff in your counties. They are doing a wonderful job.
My comment just is, you know, you started out, you're saying the projects you're working on, and one thing you mentioned was broadband. You know, now you're working on broadband. I'm on a Minnesota Rural Caucus. They work on broadband. AMC, they work on broadband. I mean, has, has everybody got their own plan or has everybody, I mean, do these guys get together and say, hey, here's the plan, we're going to just go with this one plan? Or is, are we going to have three different sets of broadband plans going across? And I guess that's what concerns me, we've got so many committees sometimes and it's just, are they all working on the same thing? You know, and it's just, I mean, you mentioned broadband and everybody else mentions broadband. We need broadband, but who's doing what? I mean, who's, who's the lead person on broadband? We, we need one good program, not three different ones.
That's exactly what we intend to do at this meeting in September, to get all stakeholders together and make sure that we have a unified plan, that it makes the most sense for all of our residents in the community. Thank you.
Commissioner Mojo.
Did anyone from our group want to add anything? Okay. Okay. You need a microphone with a green light. There you go.
I said I could share just a little bit of my experience of being there representing Morehead because of course, when I go into it, I'm looking at what, what can I bring back to help our community? And I still feel like I've only been on, it's been more than a year, but still learning about the resources that are available. But I do really appreciate things like the data. You know, we've, every meeting we get more information that's been gathered by West Central Initiative about key issues, like we spent a lot of time this year reviewing data that they've collected about childcare issues. And so it's, I know that I can bring that back and I have several times brought up specific things that we've learned in the meetings as we discuss them at the city level. Or even, you know, to, to some of the points I've brought up, been brought up today, I found it's the, it's the only place that I've, only commission I'm on right now or board or commission where it's region-wide, where we have that opportunity to collaborate with, you know, representatives of the different counties and cities within our region. And some of that is even just hearing what they're doing. And so for instance, at our meeting yesterday, we learned a little bit about a home, home renovation loan fund that they're using in Breckenridge that West Central Initiative has coordinated with Breckenridge to work with developers to renovate homes and then turn them over, sell them back at an affordable level. And so it's a little different than what we're doing in Morehead and it might be just another tool in our toolbox. And so looking for those ideas, you know, and there's just not other opportunities for us to come together on that. And the other thing I'll say is looking at the SEDs, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, it's, it's, the timing is so, you know, perfect because it does really fit well with the planning that we're doing, that you're doing at the county level with all the comprehensive planning that we're doing at the city level. And I appreciate that their approach in there is very much on a collaborative focus and also on an integrated focus. And so when they look at issues like workforce shortages, something that is a key issue right now, they recognize that we won't be able to address those issues if we don't look at things like affordable housing and access to childcare. And so, so it's giving us those resources so that we can really work at coming to, you know, together and solving some of these, or addressing some of these big problems that we have in our community. So I, I do really feel it's been a good resource for Morehead. And again, I think if anything, I just hope we continue to tap into that. I think we could even do more to take advantage of the resources that they have. Thanks.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. In terms of looking at your strategic plan that you included in our packet, I appreciate seeing that so that we can see where your focus areas will be. You know, I know we've talked a lot about different partners and different agencies and it really seems that you're putting it all together is really aligning with what our community actions are doing. And I know you've partnered a lot with the community actions and, and certainly appreciate the cohesive approach to what that, that is. You do have a difficult job in terms of representing the, the cities, but also representing the interests of our rural communities, which, you know, the issues are the same, but they really are different. And so thank you for the work that you continue to do in all of our communities. But I, I do think that we need to have these meetings and find out the best way to get the information to our, our citizens. And that's the piece where sometimes is the most difficult. We can have roundtable discussions and talk about what's available and what we have, but you know, if a citizen in Barnesville doesn't really know what's available, then what, what's, what are we doing? And you know, I don't know what the magic answer is to getting the information to people, but we'll all try to do our best to do it. So thank you.
Thank you. I think to Jill's point, it, it's going to take a lot of partnership to make that happen. You know, we're a staff of 18, soon to be 24 or 25 because we are, we did budget for more staff in development and in planning and in communications. But we have, we serve nine counties and 82 communities and you say, we're very rural. And so we're doing a lot of work with small farmers, large farmers, you know, they're going to be challenged this year. And so to your point, it's a lot of territory to cover. There are a lot of people out there. How do we reach everybody?
Well, and if I could follow up really quickly in terms of the farmer piece, I was at a meeting with our NRCS and USDA and Soil and Water Conservation District and they were talking about how it, how, how the, the face of farming has changed. Generational farmers are transitioning that to, to a next generation or there are new farmers and emerging farmers. And the standard way of contacting them about the service they provide is, is changed as well. And as you have those conversations, certainly reach out to our USDA partners and NRCS partners and SWCD because they could, they could be a valuable tool as well.
Well, this is exactly what we're hoping for. I'm sorry, I'm interrupting. There's one who wants to.
No.
Oh, I just, we wanted a conversation, so this is great.
Commissioner Kaylee.
I just was going to ask the same question that I asked yesterday. And that is that there is a notable swath of our population that is Muslim and there are a significant number of loan programs through West Central Initiative. And I just want us to discuss what are some of the ways that we are working with that population that according to their religious rules can't accept a loan, to make sure that when we lift one group up, we're really reaching out to all of the groups in our communities to lift them up.
And did we answer that question for you yesterday? I know that there was suggestion that there are some creative ways that, because I think it's about paying interest on a loan that is not intuitive to their culture, that there's a way to create a loan that doesn't have interest. And I know that Greg is working with some people on some other possibilities. I know that Verna Cragness is working on some possibilities with Somali farmers on how they can buy land, but interest-free. So it's, it's always really tricky because you don't want to be like counterintuitive to paying taxes and interest and the infrastructure, but also being respectful to those religious beliefs of the populations we serve.
And if I could try and repeat what Greg said, I certainly can't speak for our Director of Economic Development and Business, he's our, our primary loan officer. But we, as Rebecca mentioned, we are both a Minnesota Initiative Fund as well as a planning organization. So we have those two networks to pull from. Greg's been in lots of conversations with them about what they've piloted, what's working for those populations specifically and how we can make sure our paperwork reflects our values in that way that, that you mentioned, to make sure we can be reaching all of those businesses. We were able to use some of those D dollars for culturally specific rescue. We've also done culturally specific childcare with our child, forgivable childcare loans. But we do want to fine tune that and make sure that we are being respectful and inclusive.
And I learned so much in the car, traveling with these women, that I just learned about the Jasmine childcare program and the inclusivity and including many populations in that program. So it's something that we really need to all be aware of. Our landscape has changed and will continue to change. I mean, culturally, agriculturally, economically. And so I think Commissioner Manjo, did I say that correctly?
Mojo.
Mojo.
It's fine. Thank you.
That when we put this together two years ago, we were anticipating a global look at the region and the pandemic sort of put that into perspective in a way we weren't expecting. So thank you for your comments on that as well.
If I could add also, you had mentioned community action agencies. Prior to working at West Central Initiative, I did work at West Central Community Action. If you are able to look at our website and look at the resiliency grantees, community action is highly featured in there. So we're able to use those partnerships to make sure that our dollars get used in the best way possible to meet the goals of the region.
You just stole something that I was going to ask.
I'm sorry.
But I'm glad you did. So the, the, Rebecca, we, we have a lot of people that do watch us. We're, we're live right now and also we have the ability for our citizens to watch these meetings at a later time. And what I would like for you to do right now is, now that you've helped give a little description of West Central Initiative, let our people know how they can contact you.
Oh, well, thank you. So actually, we have a website. It's very active and it'll go viral in a couple of months because we're rebuilding it. WCIF.org. You can call us at, I have the 800 number memorized, 800-735-2239. We are, many of us still working virtually, but there's always somebody in the office every day and the messages get to us immediately. We are going to be going on the road more and more. So we're taking our annual meeting on the road in November. We're calling it our Caravanial Meeting. We hope that you'll be seeing more of us out and about. I know, don't you love that? I can't take credit for it. But you know, those are a couple of ways to reach us. Just pick up the phone, contact us via our website or email. We're very responsive, all 18, soon to be 24 of us, so.
And I just want to repeat, WCIF.org.
F as in Frank.
Or foundation.
Or foundation.
And you can find us on Facebook as well.
Okay. Okay. And how do they find you, how do they find you on Facebook?
Just search for WCIF.
There you go. Okay. All right. So, with that, thank you. And we look forward to continued cooperation and communication in regards to...
Thanks. And your staff have been great. They're always asking for information ahead of time. And thanks to Samantha for getting it to you ahead of time, so.
Thank you very much.
In terms of your requests, we were going through our, just starting our budget process, as you saw this morning. And so, but we should be able to answer you probably by middle September, I would think, because when we're looking at having our preliminary levy established, which would include any, any changes that might be made.
Thanks for that update. And you know how to get ahold of us, so if there are any questions you have for us, please reach out.
Okay.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Last time I started to my right. I think I'm going to start way to my left this time. Commissioner Kaylee, would you like to start this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Wednesday, the 7th, I attended the Moorhead Planning Commission There was a request for a rezone from community commercial to mixed use at 815 Main Avenue. We did decide to deny that request, and the reason being is there's a big parking issue. So, I don't know if you remember, right across from Dairy Queen, there's that new building that went up. And then, there's an adjacent property. It's a smaller building. Part of it's a warehouse. Part of it has a couple businesses in there. And due to the way that parking flows in that area, changing it to a mixed use would allow for an additional tenant to be in that building. But there's really no way to add additional parking spaces there for the increased use if there was a new tenant. So, we denied it, and we said that we would approve it in the future if a different parking plan were put together. So, maybe they could come to an agreement with Walgreens or somewhere else, an adjacent parking situation. So, see what happens there. We did approve our request for preliminary and final plat for the Horizon Shores Bank addition, as well as a conditional use permit to exceed the square footage limit for accessory structures at 812 63rd Avenue North. And there was a request at 1817 11th Street North to amend the comprehensive plan from medium-density residential to community commercial. And that was approved. Then there was also a request for 4401 20th Street South rezoning from residential high-density to residential low-density. And that one was really just to match housing in the surrounding area. All right. That was that meeting.
Can I, the question on the 1811th Street North, that was a change in?
That was rezoning from residential moderate density to community commercial.
And that was specific to one address?
Yes. And I might be misremembering, but that one, I think, was to put in some storage space. And usually, we're not super excited to do that, but the way this lot was set up, there really wasn't anything else that you could do with that, with that portion of the lot that they were looking to put in some storage space, so.
Okay. I'm just curious about how much of that was rezoned. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
On Thursday, the 8th, then, I attended, there was a ribbon cutting for Birthing of a Diamond in the Family Service Center. That's one of the new tenants in the building. So, welcome to them. I also attended the Clay Soil and Water Conservation District Meeting. One watershed, one plan projects are starting to materialize. The Board of Water and Soil Resources, so Bowser Conservationist Darren Myers, attended, and he gave an update on the Minnesota Legislative Session and Impacts to Soil and Water. Fiscal year 22 DNR Groundwater Monitoring Agreement was signed. The Soil and Water Conservation District monitors 15 wells throughout the county for the DNR. So, that was just the formal agreement about that. Soil and Water employees will be staffing a booth at the county fair each day to answer questions and connect with residents there. And our board members here can look forward to an invitation from Soil and Water for a fall tour of some of the projects they have in the surrounding area the afternoon of September 9th, followed by a pint night at Junkyard in Moorhead. So, they've worked together with some honey producers in the area and Junkyard to put together a special brew with, using local honey. And then, that'll be a fundraiser that night for any that want to attend.
Just to piggyback off that, that is in collaboration because of our pollinator habitat, that we put it on Crestwood, and that has become a fundraiser to help with upkeep of the tasks.
Sounds like it was super popular last year, and I look forward to that. On the 12th, so yesterday, I also had the West Central Initiative EDD meeting, which we talked about just now with the West Central Initiative folks that were here. I did want to mention, they talked about the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs. So, I'll just tell you briefly what some of the priorities identified were for that plan that we approved yesterday. Workforce development, business development, access to education, resilient infrastructure, housing, transportation, a new addition this year, which I thought was interesting, circular agriculture, equity and inclusion, and parks and recreation. So, that report will be coming out soon for everyone to look through.
Can I ask what circular agriculture is?
Yeah. So, in that section, they were talking about, let me scroll to it real quick. It says circular agriculture refers to closed-loop systems in which the resources used all along the process of growing, processing, and selling agricultural products are produced with minimum waste and utilized locally sourced inputs.
Thank you.
Yeah. That concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebinger.
Thank you. I had an unusual week. My one meeting was canceled, and some meetings we're trying to schedule, it's very difficult this time of year because of people's vacation schedules. So, I had no committee meetings this week, and I took the time to finally get around to some training that was offered for the Northwest Emergency Communication Board members. And I got on the Minnesota Emergency Communication Network website, and I streamed a two-hour training on the armor system overview of our radio, emergency radio system here in the state, the backbone system, and next-generation 911. And a lot of technical stuff there, I tried to absorb, but it was very informative, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Well, besides the fact that I have been with a lot of young people in our community painting at the fairgrounds for the past week, I did have one committee yesterday. I had our comprehensive plan update, and a good report from Adam Altenberg from MetroCog on where we stand in terms of the community profile. We did discuss the community input survey data and talked about gaps in responses that we may have identified. And I talked a little bit last week in my reports that we feel that it's necessary to have a couple more community input sessions to make sure that we have the most reparatory or comments that represent the majority, if not all, of the county. So, I'm hopeful that that will continue going forward. Steve, I might ask if you could forward the input survey data that we got from Adam to the rest of the commissioners. I think those are important pieces of information as we go forward in all our committees, really, to see where the, where the hopes are from our citizens. But my shameless plug now for the Thursday through Sunday, the Clay County Fair will be going on, and it's a great gathering of all of the community. If Kevin looks a lot more rested than I do is because Kevin doesn't have kids in 4H anymore, and the entry day is two days away. So, make sure and stop out and support our community kids. So, thank you.
I won't comment on that. Thank you, Commissioner Gross.
Last Thursday at the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Meeting, it was interesting, I mean, you go to some of the places, you see still people wearing the mask and stuff like that. And most of us think that the COVID is, I mean, we realize it's still here, but we think it's, hey, we're all over this thing. But there's still, the VA is still wearing the mask, and they haven't brought volunteers back yet to help out, because, because they're still not feel that it's all gone yet. So, that's, so the VA is still very, going by the old rules of wearing masks and stuff. They're doing a funding for FEAT, the Veteran Program, which they need some funds for. They're looking at, there's going to be a fall festivities at the DFW in Dilworth there for people that are, the families of people that are deployed. They're going to entertain some of the, tries to provide entertainment for some of the kids of people that are deployed. That afternoon, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, they had a session at the Legion in Moorhead. They were discussing programs for veterans on substance abuse and stuff like that. And I was interested to hear, a lot of times, you know, just like you have an illness and stuff like that, you do your surgery, and you think, okay, you're healed, you know, and that's, and they're looking at the substance and program. Once you get out of that, they want to have a program that continues contact with that paper. Just like if you have a heart surgery, you keep that going for checkups and stuff like that. So, they're looking at that program to try and keep that going. Monday and whatever, the Linden Township, there's a township officers concerned about roads and stuff like that, that Dave and Kim and I were out there going, looking over the roads there, and we discussed that. We'll cover that highway track this morning. Last night, I went to Moorhead Township, excuse me, Morgan Township. They had their annual picnic out there, and glad to see some good representation by our county people out there, giving reports and stuff like that. And they had a, I think it's one of the best turnouts they had out there at the Morgan Township for a picnic. It was a good turnout and stuff like that. And the one thing, talking to Representative Markward last night, too, discussing some things, and this CARES funds that we're going to be getting, and I don't know, have we got, have we got them yet, or is that committee going yet?
We've received half of the payment.
What he's thinking about, and what we discussed at the picnic last night, was the fact that the townships, they're going to be getting some money, too. Do they know how to handle that money? You know, I mean, do we have some processes that can be involved? Like in Morgan Township, I know they're looking at building a new town hall. You know, can it be associated with like, probably the air circulation in their old building is not good, you know? Can it be associated that way? So, our townships are aware of this, and we're discussing, should we have someone on staff to help our townships out in making sure these funds get spent so properly, anyway?
I can try to comment on that based on, the townships also received CARES dollars in the previous go-around. And one of the, I know, Steve did an awful lot of work, and we were really concerned that, for one, they applied for and got their funds, and then to be sure that they used them or their ability to, for example, some decided to transfer theirs to their school district. So, there, you know, but I think you're correct. I think some of these townships officers, they're not involved like we are, and they probably don't know what, what all of the opportunities are and what, what they have available to them. So, we're just now kicking up our new American Recovers, or we're calling it CARES Act 2 for an internal talk. It's easier to describe it that way. But we can certainly bring that up. And I know I do have to commend Gabe Twetton for his work. He, he was on behalf of our CARES committee. He did reach out to all townships during the last go-around. And I'm sure, I'm sure he'd be more than willing to, to continue that process.
Well, I don't know.
And there can also be such things, too. Commissioner Gross is, is, some of the townships have, still have broadband issues. And broadband might be another thing that, that might be able to be, their dollars might be able to be used for something like that as well.
Well, I didn't know whether we needed a township meeting of the townships, you know, tell them what's available, or I heard that Bracker County, they hired someone to work with the townships.
Sure.
So, I don't know whether Gabe could be that person, or another person be that person in our, in our staff here that can do that. But I think we...
Do you know, Steve, what the, what, what the application timeframe was for townships to submit their applications?
I don't know.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
Yeah, no, from, from, it's a little bit different this, the ARPA funds are different than the CARES. The last time, we had all the same process in requesting the funds through the state. This time, we received our funding directly from, from the federal government. And cities under 50,000 and townships are getting, are going to get their money from the state again. So, I guess I'm not as aware of the process this time, because it's not something that, that we had to do in order to get those, get our funding.
Well, I, maybe, maybe it's something that we can help in, in maybe researching that a little bit to see what that process is. And I'd hate to see them not be able to get their applications in on a timely manner so that those funds end up going.
Well, I think that's what Representative Markward was concerned about last night, too, when he spoke to the residents there that entered the board. You know, don't let these funds disappear, you know, because...
Yeah, one of the, one of the differences between this go-around and last go-around, too, was the timeframe to be able to use the funds. Last time, we were, we were kind of under the gun to spend whatever, how those millions of dollars, we had like four to six months to spend it, if that even. Whereas this time, go-around, we actually have a four-year time period. I do, I like your comment, Commissioner Gross, and maybe we can also plan on a, at the fall township meeting to give a presentation on the American Recovers and how, what information they might need to have. Like, that would be helpful to them. But the critical thing right now is, I don't, I myself don't even know from the township level their deadline for applying for, for the funds. That's the critical thing right now. I think that if we could maybe...
I mean, I think it's probably too early to do some of this stuff, but I think we need to be ready for it to help them out, you know?
Good point.
Well, and I just might comment, we were deliberate about making sure that we were not educating, but informing townships of upcoming deadlines, making sure that they knew what the parameters for what was eligible expenses in the last round. And it's our intention to make sure that we work with them as much as possible, because you're right, we know they have expenses... you're right, we know they have expenses, and we don't want them to miss out on utilization of that, those funds. I think we've had early conversations on townships that want to make sure that they're able to identify where those needs are, needs areas are, and if it means collaborating with another entity to make sure that those dollars can go further, we'd be more than happy to make sure and continue those conversations.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right. My report before I, I'm going to just piggyback on the Commissioner Mojo's comments regarding the fair. It is this weekend, and I hope if people have the opportunity, they can not only see the midway, but they can go in and see all the hard work that kids did in getting animals prepared for show. It's quite an interesting deal to be able to walk through those barns, to see all those and the activities that go on, that even adults enter different types of areas. It's kind of fun to go see those things. And most importantly, make sure you go visit the 4H food stand.
Get some popcorn.
So with that, I, too, had very, very small amount of meetings. They were yesterday, I had the construction meeting for the Resource Recovery Facility. I want to just do a shout out to all the people who had had to put up with the road closure and detour on 15th Avenue yesterday, and I believe it's supposed to end today, hopefully, if all goes well. So thank you for those people for the understanding there, but that is, was necessary to complete the infrastructure that would go to that facility. And that was one of the items of topics there. They continued to do well with the, getting the water, they're starting, going to start the sewer soon. The increase to the storm retention pond is close to being finished, so a lot of groundwork is really happening. The, they're really getting ready to do concrete work. They're going to, one of the areas they're going to start with, it would be the deep, where they drive down for the, where the trucks drive back down in. It's like, it's a considerably deep area where the concrete goes well below the surface. In addition, they look to have the permanent accesses worked on very soon. Other than that, it was a pretty positive report. We did get one, Ben did mention that the, they did get another notification of an increase to steel building costs went up again. However, we, they're somewhat confident that because of our early action, they were able to get that in, and that increase might not apply to our order. He wasn't positive on it, but he's hopeful that, that because of our timing, I think, what'd he say, Steve, was another 11% increase?
Yes. We dodged another 9%, hopefully. We dodged another 9%.
Yeah, another 9%, yeah. Oh, and then, and then the, yesterday afternoon, we had the comprehensive plan update, which Commissioner Mojo talked about, and I think it's really important to note that we have two more community input meetings coming up. One is going to be in Hitterdall, and those dates. 26 is going to be in Hitterdall from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And then we're going to have another one on the 27th in Barnesville at the Buffalo Red River Watershed District Office, that is also from 6:30 to 8:00. And that continues to go well. There was quite a bit of focus yesterday on future transportation corridors. We talked a little bit more about some different agriculture issues. Buffer discussion was talked about, and how that's changed some things. Public ditches were also talked about it. So it's really covering quite the gamut of things, so. That concludes my report. Steve?
I'll take it, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday afternoon, we began our budget meetings with our departments, and had three of those, or four of those, actually, over the last week. On the 7th, met, we had the lengthy discussion on the Family Service Center and the safety plan, which has been addressed at this board with Joe Olson and Mark Sloan, gone through the interview process with all of our county and non-county renters, and looking at identifying their needs. And so we're going to try to be coordinated, plan to be bringing forward here in the very near future. On the 7th, we met with representatives from AE2S, Onsted, Twitchell, and the city of Moorhead. There still are a number of biomorphic and geomorphic easements that we've not acquired as part of the diversion project. The Corps was also present, and they're looking to find the best way to move forward in trying to acquire those easements. I met with Robert Wilson that afternoon. We discussed American Rescue Funds, the Regional Dispatch Facility, and also their shared county interests. On the 8th, had some additional budget meetings. Met virtually with Cecilia Amadou, the Extension Regional Director, who was here a number of weeks before the support to introduce herself. I think just going to, one of the interesting parts is when I met with her, she was still virtual because one of the challenges that she faced, or some of the things that we've discussed at board, is finding housing. And so she's not, she was able to, she had just actually found a home that week, I think, the day before, but that didn't allow her to move as quickly as maybe she had hoped. And also, we invited her, as we had with Ben, to have her involved with our management meetings. Cecilia is going to be coming before our pick next week to talk about their next three-year contract that they're looking for our support for. On the 12th, I met with Sheriff Emptying. We talked about some of the concerns from the correctional officer standpoint, their advertising, they've gone to job fairs, they've utilized social media, Indeed. Some of the challenges that they've had, they did, I think, Justin shared that they had got some applications through Indeed. My understanding in talking with the sheriff is that the backgrounds became issues on most of those applications. And so we're going to be looking at trying radio, we've tried that in the past, but that's something that we're going to look at, not just with the sheriff's department, but also coordinating with some of our other departments that are being challenged. The 12th, we had the owners' meeting, that's been addressed by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo, and also the comprehensive plan meeting. I would note that Matt is also, and his staff are also going to be at the county fair on the government day from 3:00 to 7:00 on Thursday, and also Friday from 2:00 to 4:00 for some input. Last week, Governor Walz proclaimed July 27th as County Staff Appreciation Day in all the recognition of all the hard work that was done by Minnesota county employees during the pandemic, and we'll have addressed that on the 27th board meeting. Just note, there are, there are three vaccine clinics. One was yesterday at Glendon Elementary School. Today, from 10 o'clock until noon, the clinic will be at the Dilworth Elementary. And on Wednesday, we will have one here on campus from 10:00 to 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Family Service Center. Again, they'll have both Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson. Citizens can walk in, or they can register online. As I mentioned, we did the, Clay County is going to have the government days on Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00. We have a tent near the 4H building. We are posted that there may be a quorum in the event that, as commissioners, you'd like to be there. We'll have a number of different departments that will be present. And with that, that concludes my report. Oh, I would note, just briefly, as we were looking, having the discussion, commissioners, the Minnesota Association of Counties on their website has a great deal of resources, some that would have been put on specifically for township move meetings. There are webinars put on by MMB, State of Minnesota, on how to access those funds, and so as we can share that information with the townships.
All right. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Brian, do you have anything for us?
I got one further, but that comprehensive plan, is that a committee, or who's on that committee, or?
It's, it's quite a large group. Commissioner Mojo and I serve on there, we have.
Four members from the planning.
Planning Commission, yeah.
So, I mean, I was just going through our committee assignments, and I didn't, I didn't know that that was a.
We had, there was a motion in a second to add Commissioner Campbell and I on that. I don't believe that that form that we got in January has been updated with it, but if you recall, it is something where we've, we've only maybe met three times.
Yesterday was our third meeting.
Okay.
But there's several members of the planning commission on there. Matt, Steve, Steve's involved with that. Several members of MetroCog are working on it with us.
Erica from Matt's department.
Yeah, Erica.
Is there a deadline on when we plan to have that planned done, or?
I think the, I think there's a timeframe of a final report in the fall, isn't it?
We're hoping to have it by this fall, yes.
Thank you. Anything else? We are adjourned.